...of the meeting of February 12, 2014. Roll call, all members present, Linda? Thank you. Our first item would be with the superintendent, the items for the consent agenda.
Good evening, everyone. We have six items on the consent agenda. First is approval of the minutes of January 22nd, regular session. Warrants G407, R210, R211, L30, 31, and 32. Warrants, the payroll for January 29th. Warrants for CBO5. Warrants for sped 12, 13, 14, and 15. And warrants for food services 12 and 13.
Okay, thank you. Entertainer motion to approve the minutes, warrants numbers one and two. Mrs. Bonish.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd, 2014, and warrants one and two.
All those in, do we have a second? Dr. Quick, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous.
I wasn't here last week, so I'm gonna abstain.
One abstain would be Mr. Mullis. Okay. Payroll warrant. Mrs. Broussard.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrant of payroll weekend in January 29th, 2014.
Okay, a second? Mrs. Burns? All those in favor? Five in favor. Two abstain. Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay. Here we go. Warrant CBO5. Mr. Mullis.
Make a motion to approve warrants CBO5.
Second. I'm sorry. Mrs. Carroll. Second. All those in favor?
One abstain.
Okay. All right. Six in favor, one abstain. There we go. Warrant number five, special ed, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Make a motion to approve warrants sped 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Second. Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Okay. Six, one abstain. Mrs. Burns. And the final ones, warrants, food service 12 and 13. Mrs. Burns.
I make a motion to approve warrants, food service 12 and 13.
Thank you. Second. Dr. Quick. All those in favor? Six in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Carroll. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item is Jessica, our representative from the high school. Welcome.
Thank you. So I have a few things for you tonight. They're all future events. So this Friday, Strings Attached will be doing their annual Archibos things, Archibos thing, on Valentine's Day, where they go to the North Intermediate and the West Intermediate. And the high schoolers officially have the fourth graders join Strings. The Prom Fashion Expo was supposed to be this Thursday, but it's getting postponed to a later date that we don't currently know. Miss Alliance, the school's One Act, will be having its preview night on February 26th, and it will go to the METG One Act Festival on March 1st. Facing History and Ourselves, of course, here, will be going to the Armenian Genocide Day of Remembrance, held by the State House on April 11th as a field trip. And The Mystery of Edmund Drued, which is the musical this year, will be going up in May, and it just held its auditions in January.
Excellent. There's quite a variety of things coming into the future. Great, thank you. Anyone, any comments?
What's the name of the musical?
The Mystery of Edmund Drued.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why I did not think that that was a musical, but that'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Got to see. Okay, thank you so much, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right, next. Mrs. Benton.
Superintendent's report. You have a new folder, personnel report of recent resignations and replacements. Next item on my, under my report is a very special item. I'd like to invite Joseph Micali up to the table. Joseph Micali is a middle school student, sixth grader, who, along with his classmates this year, participated in the Massachusetts Municipal Association's essay contest. For the past three years Wilmington has participated, and we've had winners in two of the three contests. The essay revolves around, if I were elected leader of my community, I would make a difference by. And I'm gonna, in a minute, I'm gonna ask Joseph to read his essay. His English teacher is Mr. Kyra. And we want to commend Mr. Kyra as well for the good work. So, without further ado, Joseph.
Thank you. So, if I were elected leader of my community, I'd make a difference by making the town greener and develop a mentoring program for high school students. There are multiple ways to make a community greener and cleaner. One solution is to create a recycling program. This program would help the municipality by showing, educating, motivating citizens on the potential outcome of recycling. Also, sorting paper, plastic, and glass for recycling can make efforts easier. Holding town recycling days in a designated area, in addition to curbside pickup, can enrich the cause. As well, we can diminish the use of paper by encouraging people to read newspapers and periodicals on electronic devices. Along with making the community greener, I would institute mentoring program intended for high school students. This program would introduce students to a variety of occupations that may be of interest to them to pursue after college. One way of doing this would be to ask local businesses to participate in the program. Qualifying students would visit these participating businesses. The students would observe the daily operations of a variety of occupations that are of interest to them. This would also offer the students a hands-on experience inside to a future career. It would be my goal to have these businesses continue to mentor these students during their college careers. Most excitingly, these intern programs could turn into jobs at these local businesses. These are just two of many thoughts and viewpoints of what I would do if I were elected leader. Making a community greener can lead to a better reputation for our community. Developing a mentoring program for high school students can lead them to a successful future. I truly believe that anyone is capable of making a difference in their community.
Leader or not.
Congratulations. So, Joseph, tell us a little bit about what happened. Was it two weeks ago? You got to go.
Quite a few weeks ago. It was in late January, so, a few weeks ago. I read my essay at the Boston Sheridan.
And could you introduce your family members, please?
Sure. That's my mom over there. David, my youngest brother. Michael, he's in third grade at Lubin Street. My dad. David's the one being loud. Just to clarify that.
That's what little brothers are supposed to do. Let you know that they're there.
You gotta take it.
Do we have Mrs. Burns?
Joseph, I've known Joseph since, from the younger grades, I think through my, I think perhaps at one point you might have started out with my son. And I do want to let you know that the leadership qualities this young man possesses even at this age. And I see him being a future civic leader in this community. But not only does he excel in writing, obviously, he's very athletic. Still playing soccer?
No.
Not anymore?
I'm focusing on school.
Oh, very good. But you're still, are you still in scouting?
Yeah, I'm boy scouts.
And he's scouting, and he's very active in his parish, and I'm very proud to see him grow so big and be such a wonderful role model for his younger brothers. I just have a question. Any idea what you might like to do in the future?
I might be a meteorologist, maybe a technology engineer. I'm still not sure. Whatever my heart takes me.
Wonderful. We could use some really good meteorologists.
Definitely.
Especially to help Superintendent Benton with her decisions.
Would you like to predict what the weather's gonna be tomorrow, or what I'm gonna, should do tomorrow?
I would say, I would still call school on. Yeah. I'm on charge of it, but.
Well, we have a citation for you from the school committee.
Okay.
Yep, do you want to come through? In recognition of Joseph Micali for winning first place in the Massachusetts Municipal Association Essay Contest. Congratulations from the Wilmington School Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And this is what's so exciting for us. This is what it's all about when we see students succeed. And we're really proud of you, Joseph.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, David. We're gonna miss you. Bye.
I want to congratulate your parents as well. Thank you. Under the superintendent's report is our new 2014 Wildcat Summer Sports Clinics. We are hoping to run them again this summer. And if all goes well, they will start on June 23rd. That means we have three days to play with as far as the weather.
That means we have to have school tomorrow.
The. All of the clinics will run five days per week for a total of 28 hours, with the exception of the girls' basketball and flag football, which will run for four days, but still total 24 hours. Last summer, we averaged over 348 participants and brought in over $266,000 in gross revenues. We were able to supplement the athletic revolving account with approximately $30,000? Oh, I'm trying to remember.
Profit-wise?
Yes. I think it was around there.
Average of both $17,000.
Oh, $17,000, okay.
Over the last five years, a little over $80,000, Pauls.
I would just like to add to this, for those of you who weren't here and weren't present at the time, that this was totally from Mrs. Benton's idea, because individuals in the town were running these camps. They were using our facilities. They were paying us a stipend, but of their choice. And when she came in and looked at what was happening, she thought, why aren't we doing this right from our own summer, from our own athletic department? And got the ball rolling. And we wouldn't have had this if it wasn't for Mrs. Benton. So I think she should be recognized for that, that you should all know that that's where it came from.
Thank you. It's been a very popular program, so. Hopefully, we'll get it started on the 23rd. And lastly, there's a memo from Jean Noonan, the director of, program coordinator for CARES. We are going to be increasing the tuition for the 2014, 2015 school year. We have not increased tuition since 2003, 2004. And I think that going from $325 to $375 still puts us way below the average of most of the before-school and after-school rates around surrounding communities. I'm gonna invite Jean Noonan in the spring to talk about her program, because it really is, I mean, I am just truly amazed at the creativity of her staff and of Jean's leadership. It's really turned into a wonderful, wonderful after-school program that the kids really love. I mean, I love going down, visiting them, because the kids are happy, and they're not sitting in front of TVs, and they're active, and they're doing homework, and they're participating in activities that are really beneficial, so, kudos.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this? Thank you. I think one of the interesting things is the people she has working for her. Some of them have, like, outgrown the program, but they don't leave. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean, there's no reason they don't have to stay and do it. But they love it so much, that it's an act of love for them, with the kids before and after school. It's really, so it tells you, it has to be a good program.
And it shows, though, too.
Yes.
It shows. They're dedicated.
Definitely.
Can we go to this, and then we'll go back to the other?
Looks good to me, okay. Our next item, we're going to go, it's not quite 7:30, so we're going to pass on to new business. And that is the screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment protocol.
The Doreen Crowe Nurse Leader came before the policy subcommittee two weeks ago to present this screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment protocol that we are recommending be accepted by the full school committee. The policy subcommittee heard a presentation. The goal of this program, it's a tool that would be utilized at Wilmington High School to keep students mentally and physically healthy by preventing them from using substances in the first place, and then providing appropriate prevention, intervention, and referrals. There is a screening tool that will be confidentially administered to all 10th graders at the high school. And I think this is an important tool, and I'm pleased that the policy subcommittee recommended approval, because if we can stop one student from getting on drugs, I think this will have been well worth it. This was endorsed by the wellness committee. Dr. Quick was involved in discussions a year ago on this. And just as a side note, this, we sent this to Andy Warre, our school attorney, to take a look at it, because the town council was interested in this, because some school districts he works with were talking about it. And Andy commended the procedures, and said it was very well done, and he didn't recommend any changes. And then John Fawcett was thrilled to receive it, and felt the same way. So we told him to share it. So I don't know if Dr. Quick or Ginny Warne just want to talk about it.
The only thing, I mean, I wouldn't say, literally, they had, it was about, about a year ago, and they came to us. I was really just listening and taking it all in more than anything. And we did have a lot of questions, but it was, it sounds like it could be, hopefully, you know, a really great and rewarding program, and a first step into, you know, keeping kids from doing the things that, you know, that we're, as a parent, we're so worried about in the first place. And so it's, you know, it seemed that, and I believe that they have, if I remember correctly, it's been a while. But this has been something that they had been developing over time, and it just had great results thus far, so, in their pilot programs. So I think that it, like I said, I had nothing to do with any of the decisions that were made on it. I listened, I absorbed it all. But it does sound like it's going to be a very, very good program to have.
The Hudson Public Schools piloted it.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Mullis.
Were, where did you say was implemented? You just, I couldn't hear you.
Hudson, Hudson, Mass. Public Schools.
And.
Piloted it.
How are they measuring any results? Is there any way to measure any results, or saying if it's been successful? Or are they going back to the stats that were given before, or anything like that, to see if this actually has had some success?
With that being, the first year, we don't have stats, but they, we will collect them. They will collect them.
And how will they?
What they did get was very positive feedback from students and parents.
Okay.
For doing it, so. This is under the Department of Public Health, who's really oversees this. And they, believe me, they collect.
Yeah, and I mean, I think it's a great program. I just wanted to, I'm curious to finding out how in the future you would get these stats and measure them to implement them everywhere. I mean, and that's really my.
I will get a response from Doreen on that. And a letter went out to all the parents. The screening will be conducted on, between February 25th and 28th, and parents are allowed to opt out of the program. But I spoke with Doreen today, and no one has so far, which is great.
Mrs. Broussard.
I was just curious, reading through this, has, was there anything in the discussion, and you might not know where it's a pilot, about rolling it out to the middle school-aged children? And maybe that's a ways down the road, but it just sort of occurred to me that it might be appropriate to do something similar at that level.
Actually, Doreen Crowe spoke to that. We're starting with the 10th grade, but the goal would be to do it in middle school, bring it down to the middle school level, because we're seeing children younger experimenting with drugs, so, good point.
Thank you.
We have to take a motion.
Yes. Why did you pick 10th grade?
It fit into the health curriculum, and it seemed the natural place to, the nurse leader and the health teachers felt that it fit in 10th grade best to begin with.
Now that we don't have the DARE program to, does drug and alcohol and substance abuse come up in any other programs before 10th grade?
Oh, yes. It's in the health curriculum in the middle school.
Oh, okay.
You had mentioned before that in 5th grade, or is it 6th grade they start talking about it? Or are they introducing?
Yeah, 6th grade.
One quick question. You had mentioned the pilot in Hudson. Are they starting in 10th grade as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, this year, they're doing it in the middle school in Hudson, so.
Okay.
We need a motion to approve the screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment protocol. Oh, Mrs. Burns.
I make, excuse me. I make a motion to approve the screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment protocol.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. We're about two minutes ahead of time, but how, it'll take me that long to read the introduction for this, so, we're going to have a, we're going to go into a budget hearing on this year's, the FY 2014.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Oh, yeah, that's the mistake one. I didn't get that. I didn't, it's my fault. Fifteen budget. Okay, here we go. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, we will recess this meeting in order to conduct the annual public hearing on the proposed FY15 School Department Operating Budget. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the regular meeting will reconvene with future, with agenda item number 5.1. As a matter of protocol, Mrs. Benton will present the proposed budget, and the committee will then entertain any questions or comments from the public on the proposed budget. The school committee will take up its own discussion of the proposed FY15 budget in the regular meeting. So we're ready for the budget presentation?
You all have a real packet, a handout, the presentation, the PowerPoint, and there's some upfront to John for you. Franklin Delano Roosevelt said, quote, "The school is the last expenditure on which America should be willing to economize," unquote. And in my 10 years in Wilmington, I can truly say that the town has certainly supported and agreed with that opinion. Wilmington has always come through in supporting the schools. And again, this year, the town manager has worked cooperatively and collaboratively with the school department in coming to a recommendation of a 3.5% increase over the 2014 budget. Our budget goal is to continue to support 21st century learning initiatives throughout the district, and also to continue the work that we started in defining what constitutes the 21st century education. Provide teachers with the tools they need to accomplish this. In addition, it's important, I hope, that the school district will continue the work that we have started around the educator evaluation system and district-determined measures. The teachers have been working really, really hard this year in trying to first understand and carry out the new educator evaluation system. And the teachers are developing and identifying the district-determined measures that we will be submitting to the state in June, that again, is part of the educator evaluation process. The salary increase, the 3.5% increase comes to a total of $1.1 million. It's a 1.1, oh, this is, excuse me. Non-salary increase is $1.1,888,185. Non-salary, we're reducing that budget line item by $11,192, for a total of $1,176,993. The reason for the increase is some staff requests that include an ed assistant for an inclusion class at the West. Increase of .25 for the administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent. We have put in the budget a placeholder for an additional kindergarten teacher and ed assistant, in case we have the enrollment blip that we had this year. A .5 media teacher at the high school to run the new media center that WCTV will be actually supplying the equipment for, in teaching a course, an elective course. .20 PE teacher, because the class sizes in PhysEd this year were running close to 30, and we wanted to make sure that we don't have that happen again. A halftime resource room teacher, sped teacher at Boutwell. A 3rd grade teacher at Shashin, and a 1st grade teacher at Lubin Street. An OIT desktop technician for the new high school library media center to run the Genius Bar, and oversee all of the new technology at the high school. Addition of a new classroom at the high school, a Pathways classroom. A BCBA, the sped office. We'd like to hire a human resource coordinator to handle all of the state mandates that are before us, including fingerprinting, all of the new requirements around the state recording of data, and professional development, and course credits, and, what am I?
Affordable Care Act.
The Affordable Care Act. Exactly, which is going to increase our work a lot. The, a .1 speech teacher at Boutwell. We're reducing a teacher at West and North because of enrollment, and pre-K compass ed assistant for the Wildwood. So that totals 9.95, full-time equivalents, to the tune of $414,179. So the total budget increase would bring our budget to $34,805,343. Additionally, we've agreed with the town on moving some of our capital requests to the following year, so unfortunately, Kathleen, I apologize, but the clock and speaker and phone system at the middle school will not happen till the following fiscal year, but it will happen.
I hope so.
We're requesting a special ed van, two vans, one with a wheelchair, one ramp, one without. Replacement of all the computers at the middle school, teacher computers, and completion of the elementary projectors project for the tune of $259,975. As I said before, in quoting Nelson Mandela, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." And I compliment the school committee in the town of Wilmington on supporting the schools in a way that is second to none. I was at a superintendent's meeting this morning I was at a superintendent's meeting this morning and listening to stories of budget presentations and fights over what the towns and cities were wanting to allocate to the superintendents, and, and I sat there smiling, and they all turned to me and said, "We don't want to hear it." And I said, "I gotta say it again because it's true. Wilmington really is a community that supports the schools in the, in the right way, so."
Dr. Quick?
Just a quick question on the capital request, the sped wheelchair van, that, you said that was not, that, those are not replacements, those are in addition?
Mr. Aggero.
They are replacements.
They are replacements, okay.
The current vans have a lot of miles and a lot of maintenance, so.
Okay, thank you.
With the addition of the kindergarten teacher and the assistant, I presume that was for to add another class at Wildwood?
If needed.
If needed? Okay, where would you put that, if that, if we do, because aren't they pretty tight in there?
We would have to move one of the programs over to Boutwell.
Okay. And, and I might have missed it along the way, what is the, I know that the Boutwell was having phone issues, some sort, has that been addressed, or is that, I'm not sure what this does?
Totally addressed, they've been replaced.
And everyone can call?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
That was a very long prob, big problem with external phone coverage.
Very good, thank you.
Mister, and Mr. Ellis deserves a lot of credit because he persevered through that and ended up getting us a much better product.
Wonderful.
And since we're on that with the Boutwell, what about, I know, because this was a long process too, do we all have heat?
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna say. It's funny, it's one school as opposed to others that these things happen. Dr. Quick?
I do have a question, and this is kind of going about with what you were talking about, if we keep seeing these increases at the Wildwood, when does the redistricting issue become raised?
Frankly, I, I don't think you need to see any more increases at Wildwood, that's a recommendation that I will make to the school committee next year, is to look at the, the division line on Glen Road because clearly the, the enrollments on both sides of towns are not in parity anymore, and that, that should happen.
Okay, thank you.
Just a side note, and I will put this in the next packet, NEAS does a, no, NESTEP does a, an enrollment projection for us, along with the one that Paul does every year, and I have to tell you, we were, we were right on, right on. So, what's interesting is, in 2018-19, the middle school will be down to 756 students, and the high school, 837. Now, I'm not feeling confident about the high school because I do believe that we'll be bringing back, bringing, not back, bringing students into the high school starting next year that have chosen in the past to go to, to tech or to private schools, so we're already seeing those, the decline in applications, so that's very good news.
All right, so we're going to be asked to vote on the budget, if you see the page right here. Okay, and so I would entertain motion, oh, I'm sorry, no, what am I supposed to say? Are there any further comments or questions from the public? Okay, so now we can go on and.
So just close the public hearing?
Okay, and we, okay, if there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing. Okay? It is closed, all right. And now, the school committee will be asked to vote on the budget. The first motion would be to approve the superintendent's recommended FY 2015 operational budget totaling 34, 34 million, I can't even, I can't get it out, 805,343. Mr. Mullis?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommended FY 2015 operational budget totaling
Thank you, do we have a second? Mrs. Burzad? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. And the second motion is to approve the capital request for FY 2015 totaling $259,975. Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to approve the capital request for fiscal year 2015 totaling $259,975.
Thank you, we have a second? Dr. Quick? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benton. On behalf of the school committee, once again, we thank you. Every time she makes a presentation, Mrs. Benton gives us a different way of looking at the figures, they all total the same in the end, but it makes it so easy for us.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, now we're going back to, we did that, that, we're on public comment? No public comment tonight. Other reports, this is just, you don't have to, we can leave, but you don't have to. Okay, first we'll do the superintendent's search committee.
Could I perhaps maybe go first then, because I would, I might need Mrs. Benton's input?
Yes, I'm sorry.
If that's all right with everyone?
Yep. Actually, well, we'll probably do that and do the policy that's, that's quick, and then Mrs. Benton, all right. Our political representative is here.
No, not political, please.
Legislative representative.
Well, as you know, we, I met with Commissioner Mitchell Chester, along with Senator Tarr, Representative Ken Gordon, and Representative Moselli's assistant, Margaret Wilson, last Tuesday, along with other school committee members from the surrounding areas in Massachusetts, from Westport to West Springfield, to Tinsborough, Peabody area. I had a superintendent attend the event, as well as two educators. And I have to say, I didn't expect to get the answers that I was, we were hoping to get, which were more clarifying, but it did bring to the attention of our state legislators the concerns and issues regarding Common Core, which others spoke to, and of the Park piece, and, which, they, after the meeting ended, they were planning to work collaboratively to investigate this further. If you don't mind, I, I know I posted a summary to the MASCE list server, not sure how many of you have read it, I can read it, but I think these are some highlights of the meeting that everyone should be aware of, parents and community as well, but I'll just read from my notes if you don't mind. Funding will be an issue. It's great to hear, we're asking how districts are expected to fund the pilot piece, and Commissioner Chester did say that they were in talks with the federal government, that pursuing it through the MSBA, which he even stated would be more for infrastructure for those districts who don't have it, because it would be considered an upgrade to the buildings, but it still doesn't speak to the funding for the technology piece. And he also said the state bond bills, which Senator, Senator Tarr had spoken to, saying that although that could be a viable possibility, it can take quite a long time to get through the State House for, for approval. And as it is, there's an IT bill currently, now I believe in the House of Representatives, they've just finished with the Senate to upgrade funding for, upgrade infrastructures, I think this was primarily towards those districts in Western Mass that have yet to have broadband in their communities. So right now it's all up in the air, and there's no, and I don't foresee it to be a viable discussion at this point, that districts are going to be stuck with it for funding. And some of the numbers that have been thrown out between, I know our district, there's a guesstimate of anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000 just for the technology piece that Park would, will demand. So that's a huge concern that every community in Massachusetts, I think, is going to be waiting for more concrete answers and a viable solution. He also contradicted himself in, in some slight ways, and I don't believe the legislators would have picked up on it as much, only because this is nuanced to them, but, and I don't mean to, I don't want to get, I don't want to sound condescending or nitpicky, but we've spoken about the pen and pencil test. And although districts are not, and I don't believe are being charged for that piece in the pilot program, if they don't meet the technology portion, if this assessment, which I think is, I don't think we have an option in this, when this assessment becomes live, districts will be charged for the pen and paper, paper piece, which would be an additional huge cost on top of it. So I don't know how we're supposed to make gains in our technology if we have to put out additional monies just to do the standardized test. But he pretty much tried to sidestep that piece in front of the state legislators. Another aspect was that, the top, another concerning piece of that conversation in its entirety was that, in discussing whether or not Park would be a viable assessment for the state of Massachusetts, well, as you know, we're not getting results back from this pilot test, so we have no ideas as to how, how this could work for our district or not work for our district. We will be getting those results next year, but as to what to compare them to, makes no sense. But in the meantime, we're expected to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in technology because in, in an assessment that they, then let me, I'll go on, what, we, they are, we're expected to spend all this money on an assessment that they might not be viable for the state of Massachusetts, and that they might just go back to MCAS. I did ask them, well, why weren't they looking at MCAS, maybe tweaking it, and seeing if we could bring it up to par with the, the new standards? And he, and at first, in the beginning of the meeting, he said, "Well, it wasn't worth it, it didn't really meet the, the new standards effectively, we wanted to bring the technology piece in, buh 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 buh," and yet, in the end result, you know, 30, 40 minutes later, he's saying, "Hey, if this doesn't work, then we'll go back to MCAS, we'll have to just look at MCAS." Well, I, I can't, and I kind of called him out, and I said respectfully, that I didn't think it was a viable solution or even option, that you can expect districts to spend that type of money that they don't have on an assessment tool, that you might determine might not best suit, you know, the districts in Massachusetts. He's still thinking that a one-size-fits-all perspective is working, would work for the state, which I have, I'm very suspect with the lack of transparency in this whole process to, to begin with. Kept saying that we, we will look into it, we will assess it, and we haven't determined yet who we are, we actually is, is it the Board of Education, or is it the Pearson, Pearson Company, which is a private company, for-profit, that Commissioner Chester is the chairman of the coalition in the state, so I'm not sure where we come in, comes into play, and he really wouldn't get, get into clarifying details on that. There were educators who spoke directly to, and this will be my last topic per se, spoke to the inability of their students to, a chemistry teacher spoke to the inability of his students, he's high school chemistry, basic skills of computation, and he said, "If that's not bad enough," he said, "there's some of my students who don't even know how to use a calculator properly to figure out problems." He said, "There's a huge gap in the Common Core aspect, and in this Park testing with regards to the basic skills, and learning about the foundations before stepping, making the step up to more advanced critical thinking." And I spoke to, I think Superintendent Benton and I share the same passion for literature and the arts, and that whole gap and that whole perspective, and ability for students who learn in those aspects, it's not there, not any standards, and it's a huge concern for, for me. The other educator was a special education teacher, and this is important to note because I think this is a huge red flag. She had asked him about the ability of an assessment of this type to encompass those students who historically have scored low on the standardized tests or failing, and that, how, how can we make this test, so that those students who can meet the requirements and of graduation at the high school level, of, of community level, but might not, but might not pass the standardized test, you know, they deserve more than, they deserve a diploma, you know, and what, how can we remedy this assessment tool to kind of encompass that piece? One of the deputy commissioners decided to speak for Commissioner Chester because he deferred, and stated, "Well, we offer them some type of certificate, and, you know, we say, 'Well, the certificate of completion,'" and he said, "Yeah." And she said, "Well, how do you expect these students to go on to higher education, or even to get jobs, compete with their, their peers with diplomas? Oh, they shouldn't have any problem competing with their peers with the certificate of completion. This just means that they didn't pass the standardized test." And she's like, "No, this means they don't get a diploma, and thus not, does not graduate." He said, "Oh, shouldn't be a problem, they should be able to compete competitively with their, their peers," which, I'm kind of still kind of confused over that statement, but the other, that's alarming at it, at it, at its core. And I asked him, because that opened up the avenue with regards to, as you know, Superintendent Benton is the chair of the SEAM Collaborative, she's one of many superintendents who are on the board, I was curious to find out how many collaborative schools, which, again, are public schools that cater to special education students, you know, under a free, appropriate, free and appropriate public education piece, I asked him how many of these collaborative schools were participating in this day, and he looked at me, he said, "What are collaborative schools?" And I couldn't respond, I gotta be honest with you, so I, I looked at the educator, and I said, I just looked at her like, and she explained to him nicely that these are, these are special education schools that, you know, districts have, and he, he looked at his deputy commissioner and he said, "Oh, they are participating, I don't know what the numbers are, but the numbers are somewhere," and he stopped short of saying, "I'll get you the numbers," because needless to say, he wasn't smiling by the time. I did hold his feet to the fire a little bit, and I don't think he particularly cared for it because, more so because it was in front of state legislators. Senator Tarr did ask him, which I think is a question that we, Superintendent Benton also had, was we were curious as to what the rubrics were in, in this assessment piece, and he said everything but the answer. "We have it all figured out, and, you know, we're going to assess this, and we're going to determine the standard," not, he avoided answering the question, so even Senator, and I think that's what kind of, I think that put the cherry on Senator Tarr's plate with regards to, there's something else going on here. I really strongly feel, I have nothing against Common Core or the Park assessment personally, there, I think there are huge concerns, that I can't understand why they wouldn't actively address these concerns in some capacity and provide some answers, and I think that in itself is skeptic to what the true motivation is of what is before us. As we know, a federal grant was, millions and millions of dollars has already been invested with this coalition, there's actually, there was three, and now we're down to two because the one coalition just dropped, has dropped out. We lost another state who dropped out of the Common Core process. Where we stand now, and I'm asking for guidance, I'm asking for discussion, and I've spoken with Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Benton, is that where would you like me to pursue it? I very much like to pursue it with the legislators and kind of keep my pulse on it. Mrs. Benton also suggested, because Secretary of Education, Matthew Malone, has been visiting districts discussing these pieces, and thought that maybe a letter to him, and granted, it would be, I wouldn't send it without your approval, would be the next step. I'm just looking for some guidance and some clarity as to how I can represent the, the position of the school committee, because I, I'm just a little nervous going forth.
Mrs. Benton?
Thank you, thank you for doing that great work. I, I think that down the road, your best energy is going to be put forth in getting legislators to fund these mandates, because I was at a presentation this morning, and Burlington, as you all know, is going to be doing, testing all of their students, 3 through 10, with the Park, with technology to see how it goes. Wilmington will never be able to afford the technology that Burlington has, and big city in cities get all the grants, we're in a place where we never, we don't qualify for any of the grants. And I put before your, before you tonight, a letter that we all, superintendents received last week about, from the Early Childhood Committee about a new mandate for kindergarten assessment. If you look at the second page, it talks about giving, paying teachers stipends, it talks about buying technology. We don't have those funds, and Mrs. Burns is absolutely correct in saying to the state, "You're telling us we need to do this, but you don't have a plan on how to fund it." And I was telling Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Kane yesterday, Paul and I got a request from Senator Tarr's office about what our priorities are, and what we sent in was funding Park, funding this new MICA, Massachusetts Kindergarten Educational Assessment, and if, if we're going to be required to do them, the money has to come from somewhere. Interesting, this morning I learned that Pearson is requiring that any schools using iPads to do the Park test purchase keyboards. Now, kids who use iPads do not use keyboards, and Burlington was telling us, I mean, they spent $20,000 on the keyboards, but the kids won't use them because they don't, they're not used to it. So, there's a lot of hidden costs to this program as well. So, there's a lot of hidden costs to this program as well. So, I think as a school community, you would be best focused on pursuing the funding at this point.
Can I ask you a question in your opinion? And I'd be interested in anybody else's. In the way that this Pearson piece is rolling out, can, when you're asking students to purchase this technology for this type of pilot, is that truly a free and appropriate public education?
No, no, the school department has to pay.
Oh, so, okay, so they're not, oh, okay. I see. I didn't, because I know that there was some.
Yeah, no, school departments have paid.
Discussing, okay.
We just bought all of our headphones for the testing. But, you know, there's lots and lots of questions. The principals were at an MCAS meeting last, this week to talk about, you know, to review the rules and regulations. And a question, one of our principals raised an excellent question about the students who are piloting the PARC test. There are some students that their IUP calls for testing in small group. And we have a computer lab. And so, we said, well, what are we supposed to do? He said, well, move the computers around the room. I don't, we've got people who aren't educators, you know, running, implementing a test. So, I think it's, there's going to be a lot we're going to learn from the pilot. Revere is joining Burlington and using the, you know, doing the electronic testing. And they literally, in Burlington, are going to, like, fifty percent of the kids will be using PCs, fifty percent will be using iPads. So, I was very impressed with the technology team from Burlington that's sort of leading the charge. They also spoke about the MSBA. People, we're very, very fortunate, a consultant that we have working with Neil gets what a future high school needs. A lot of these high school, a lot of these school projects are getting, they're purchasing equipment that's not going to be useful in five years. And it's really important to build up the infrastructure. So, I think there's going to be a lot we're going to learn along the way.
Mr. Mullis?
Yeah, I mean, I want to first commend Mrs. Burns for all the work that she's done and the time she's taken. You have a lot of passion for what you're doing here.
Thank you.
And the whole school committee, I'm sure the whole town thanks you for it. Just hearing what you're saying, I'm hearing that you have some concerns about the motivation of not only the commissioner, but.
Concerns, and I think it's felt throughout the state with the other school committee members I've spoken to, too.
Is the motivation, I'm sorry, are your concerns with a private company that is administering the test? You feel that there's some?
Because of such a rush to push this through, where it really doesn't appear, and from what they're, the lack of answers, it doesn't feel like it's completely developed to a level where we should compromise our staff and students' time, especially putting this right back-to-back with MCAS and their emotional aspects that go into standardized tests. There's not answers saying, kind of explaining the thought process to it. So, and I will speak for myself and no other, I do suspect it's more bureaucratic, politically generated. We will be having a change in leadership in two years. And with that typically comes a change at the Department of Education head. It's tough for me not to feel with each passing day, a strong that this is not for the benefit of the, of raising the bar for the state of Massachusetts, who is one of the leading state in this nation with education. And yet, has been stated recently that sixty-five percent of students that go into, and if I'm correct, community college require remedial help, which leaves me to question, well, what's that sixty-five percent? There's a lot of research that is not out there, and I can't seem to find it. Doesn't mean to say it's not out there, but there's no reference to it. You know, Commissioner Chester said sixty-five percent of students leaving high school go right into remedial courses for community colleges. Well, what does that sixty-five percent looks like? And how many, you know, community colleges are you, are you basing your research on? I mean, we've got differentiated learners. We've got kids coming off of, you know, IEPs and things, going into, you know, it's, sometimes it can be a step. I just don't, it's tough. I'm losing faith, you know, I've lost more faith after the meeting than I, you know, than I had before, I had more trust and faith with hoping to get a better direction as to understanding. And I'm losing, I'm personally losing faith in it because I personally don't think how it's being, I don't want to say wrong, excuse me, how it's being driven. There's no answers to clarify and to assist districts to better prepare for this pilot test that we're all, that we're forced into doing. And I don't, I might not be so eloquently as I would prefer to put it, but we're not opting, we can opt out of it. And to have Commissioner Chester, you know, spin it that, you know, everyone's participating, everyone we asked is participating, well, you weren't given a choice. The accommodations that we had to try to compensate for the double testing aren't viable. And he just skipped over those points of interest. You know, it was, you know, it was speaking to, I don't mean to say this.
Can we?
Go ahead.
Sorry. You get so excited, but I really would like the school committee has some.
Forgive me.
I want to continue what I was saying. You know, after hearing what Mrs. Burns has to say, I'm not only concerned as a school committee member, but also as a parent, I think all parents should be concerned. I agree with Superintendent Benton that we should be working with legislators. However, with that being said, I think legislators need to hear from their constituents on how they feel to make things happen. Otherwise, nothing's going to happen. And I think it might, it's our job to educate the parents and educate the town of what's happening, because I don't think a lot of parents know what's going on. I don't, I, I mean, I've read what's going on, but after hearing you, I think I've learned, you know, more in the last fifteen minutes than I knew in the last, you know, year of what's happening. So, I think it's important for us to let the parents know, to talk to legislators, because this is very concerning to me as a parent and as a school committee member, obviously, but.
I'll be happy to add to any questions.
It is remarkable what you've done, so I do commend you on that.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Quick?
So, I also want to just reiterate what Manny said. You've done an excellent, excellent job. Thank you so much for becoming our legislative representative on the board. Absolutely, I mean, this is completely frustrating to hear as a school committee member and as a parent, because I feel like, and going with what Mrs. Benton was saying, was that you almost feel like they're rushing to do something just to get it out there and not putting the proper planning in place and considering what they want and require us to do. And yet, they're not doing their own, you know, it's almost hypocritical, at least from what she's saying, from what I'm hearing. And not only that, but again, with what Mrs. Benton was saying, and this is why I absolutely concur that we should definitely, you know, I am one hundred percent behind you as working with the legislation, because it becomes counterproductive. You keep asking us for all these unfunded mandates. You're not giving us the money to do it. Where are we going to take the money from? Providing the education for our children, which is the absolute point in the first place. So, I feel, you know, basically, in a nutshell, I'm one hundred percent behind you, and I absolutely agree. I think we need to really, as to what Mrs. Benton said, we really need to get it through their skulls that where is this money going to come from? It's going to come, if we have to do it ourselves and you're forcing us to do this, it is going to, where's it going to come? It's going to come from the technology that we so desperately need. It's going to come from those other things, and that's going to affect our children's education, which is why we're, you know, they want to do this testing in the first place. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mrs. Bussell?
I was just going to say, again, as Mr. Mullis said, that we're learning as we go. So, how do we help educate our community, the same piece? I think there's a lot of people that would shake their shoulders and say, I don't know what you're talking about. What do you mean? They have to take another test right after they take the MCAS. So, maybe it's appropriate for us to do some sort of education for our community. And then the other thing that it strikes me, reaching out to our legislative representatives, in the past, I've seen templates, letter templates, that we could share with our community and do some sort of mass mailing campaign. These are just things that are coming to the top of my head, but.
Could I add something to before we go? Oh, I just want to respond to the PARC piece. You're absolutely right. And Mr. Ellis is actually working on, was doing it today, a website, a section for our website, and we're going to do a connect, a call-out to parents, pointing them to the information on the PARC, because we thought that it was important to.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that. Good.
As I'm thinking through this, I think MJ accomplished something that I have never heard of in all these last ten years, that a member, a sitting member of the school committee by herself could ever get a meeting of that magnitude that she had. I don't know if we appreciate what.
Well, Representative Gordon's office had a.
And Representative Gordon's, but to work.
They didn't want to meet and.
Exactly. Exactly. And also, kudos to Representative Gordon, too, then, because it doesn't happen. Like, you and I, we don't go in there and have a meeting with Commissioner. It doesn't happen. And she made it happen. On the other hand, I feel that at this point, Mass Association of School Committees needs to stand up. They've all been told, it's on our website all the time, every day. Before I came tonight, there were three more. People are responding to your information, which is really interesting. There's one girl, Tracy Nowick, from Worcester, who's been working on this for the last three years. And she keeps, she's like a voice in the wilderness, and MJ came and went, whoosh, and got it. So, very, that's incredible to me. But what I want to say, that being said, you have to be, we have to be careful as a group also, that Wilmington isn't attacked in any other way. We have to be tactful about how we move forward. And what's happening is like tonight, there's a meeting in Medford on the PARC done by the, this one in our, we're Division One. When Evelyn gets back, we're going to be working on one, we're going to be having some, we might be better off to have Matthew Mahoney at ours. That might be the good step to get him going as a possibility. But in any case, I think that we need to step back a little bit and get on board with somebody, a bigger force at this point, because I think now what could happen is they'll see our name and they're going to shut us down, in a sense. And I don't mean to say that to be negative, but I've been thinking about this.
I share that concern.
MASC really needs to step up to the plate.
I think that, you know, until, hoping that we can band together the school committees across the state, because that's the only way I think we can be effective, because at this point, I have been told that the joint chairs of the Education Committee at the State House have not yet really taken notice to this aspect, or I think, or perhaps avoiding it. I don't know, this is what was said to me, so it's second party, but.
Perhaps we could have Glenn come here.
You know, something Glenn would be a wonderful, Glenn Kuchar?
Yeah.
Be a wonderful person to speak to on this. He's, he's been, Mike has also been referring to him, because this is a very, you've got to be careful. And again, the, I don't want to say retaliation, but the backlash, I guess, is something that I personally think we need to be aware of, especially if we're just.
And it's not just on MJ, it's on us as a school committee.
Well, and I wouldn't, I would hold back doing anything without.
Well, you've done everything that we've, we've certainly backed everything at this point. And yes, we do agree with you up through this point. And MJ had asked, could she just get some, you know, where does she go from here? But one of the things that I really don't want you to be so concerned that you get discouraged by this, because I think as Mrs. Benton said, now the, where, in the end, where we want to go is the money.
Mm-hmm.
Well, ultimately, we want to, we want to keep those ideas in mind, what, you know, what is MASC doing? What is anyone else doing? Why are these of concern? But ultimately, it leads to, how are you going to pay us for this?
I agree with you. I think that, I think, because I can, there's some, and I think that's great, because I think you need to focus, but I think what we're discussing is that this potentially, and this will be my last statement, I promise, this potentially will shoot public education in the foot. And it won't be something fifty years down the line, it'll be sooner than that. And that in itself, I think, is what, perhaps where gets, where my concerns lie mostly. But I think one step at a time is, helps me to focus. Should I write a letter then, follow through and write a letter to the Secretary of Education? And with regards to.
Are you recommending then that she wait to do that and try to get a bigger core, you know, collaboration with other, so it's not just Wilmington going forward with this? It's other towns?
I can also wait until, I have to follow up with the representatives anyway, and I could, depending upon as to where they are, might be also the determining factor, if you think that that would be.
Because they may need an individual letter from each of us later on into the year.
Well, the other thing, I don't want to sidetrack, I don't want to sidetrack whatever they, Representative Gordon, Tarr, and Sally might be doing collaboratively. But I do want to make sure that they, they don't, that they keep driving, so.
So, then, so, don't do the letter at this point? Wait and see what's happening?
Okay.
And we could find out for the next meeting. We'll see if anything is come up. And then we might decide to invite somebody to us. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. And the only other thing, we had a policy from the Policy Subcommittee?
Yeah, we have a meeting about the screening, brief intervention referral to treatment that we voted on tonight. And we also talked about possible Heimlich maneuver training after that incident at the north. And then we're going to set up another meeting for the near future.
Okay. And if anyone does have any policy questions, give them to Ginny anytime, like email anytime. Dr. Quick?
I had my WEF meeting. And just to remember, our spelling bee, it's on the district website. You can get your registration forms. The one difference between this year and last year is that this year it's four people on a team instead of three. So, even more fun to help with the spelling, right? So, please, we're looking for teams. It was a lot of fun last year. I think everybody had a really great time. And four people to a team, registration forms are online, right on the district website if you have any questions. Mrs. Peterson has put her information on there, but just look on there. It has all the information, rules, the spelling bee court. Mrs. Benton's going to, wait, you're not going to be our timekeeper?
No, I am.
You are, okay. She's going to be our time, she was almost going to be on a team, but.
But I think you ought to get a school committee team together.
Oh, we, yeah, we're working on something.
Oh, yeah. I'll be on top when we book that. And that's it for WEF. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
All right, I'm going to give my cheer up to Julie.
Thank you.
Welcome.
She's going to stay there. It's kind of my, tonight, thank you so much. Be careful going home. You have a great decision to make. We're all waiting.
There's a young lady in the back corner who's doing the snow dance, I think. Since last week, we had changed up the structure of our subcommittee of three is now, as we all know, a committee of five. We're getting a little tripped over what we're calling it. But our superintendent search committee is now the five of us that can participate in the selection process as we move forward. Since last week, we met twice last week since our last regular school committee meeting. So, I think we're fairly up to date on what's going on in the process. Last Thursday, we did have Mr. Gilbert join us at our special school committee meeting to share the results of the focus groups and the online survey. That information led us to put together the selection criteria that we will be considering the candidates against that list. We approved the marketing brochure that will be shared with candidates. So, the next step at this point, we've done quite a bit of outreach to the community to get people interested in participating in the search committee. We've had an overwhelming response to that. People have until the end of this month, February 24th, to raise their hand. After that, the committee will be looking at those folks and putting together the search committee. And then the search committee will be meeting here at our regular school committee meeting to meet with Mr. Gilbert to get some orientation and training and also to receive the charge from us. And then at that point, we turn it over to them for a little while to start considering candidates. So, there we are.
No, if you want to ask, are there any questions?
Oh, any questions?
Okay. All right, all said, thank you. Okay. No other, no, oh, correspondence?
Yeah, correspondence.
And future meeting dates. I want to thank you all for coming to the Mr. Hull's presentation. It's nice for us to be there when, you know, kudos are going back and forth across the aisle, so it's nice to have everybody present and who was able to make it. We appreciate that. With that being said, another one is coming up on March 4th. It's not listed on here, but on March 4th, at seven o'clock, that's the night we meet with the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee still has this absolute, they could say they don't. And the Finance Committee still has this, absolutely, they could say they don't care for whatever reason, for whatever is there. So we really need to show our support of the superintendent's budget by being there if possible, so we'd appreciate that. And then our regular meeting, scheduled meeting will be March 12th and then March 26th. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick?
Only one? Motion to adjourn.
Second, Mrs. Burns, all those in favor, unanimous, Lynn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Good night.